Thank you, Father. Thank you, Lord, for being with us today. Thank you, good Lord, for our life, health, and strength. Father God, I ask you to be with us during this meeting. Be with us and help us to make decisions that will do some good for the town of Silo City. Lord, continue to bless each and every one of us to continue to keep us. These are my other blessings I ask in Jesus' name.
Amen. The church is in a place of allegiance. A place of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as strong.
Today's prayer and worship says the town's governments, dynamic partnerships, and its leadership.
Mr. Brown, if you will, please say.
Silo City is a state prosperous and vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a favorable competitive society.
Thank you, sir. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Remember, we have one, there's a new agenda table that I have at the town board. It's going to be considered in the brickwork two, community development law grant, community funding stuff. How about?
Make a motion to approve adjustments to the agenda.
Say. The move to approve second, the adjustments we made to the agenda, all the things that have been known by sign of lot. All opposed have the same right, hearing none, most carries.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Say. The move to approve second to the agenda be approved? All the things that have been known by sign of lot? All opposed have the same right, hearing none, most carries.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Say. Consent agenda has been moved to approve second to the be approved? All the things that have been known by sign of lot? All opposed have the same right, hearing none, most carries. Ah, it is now public comment time. Ah, Mr. Dean, if you will come and state your name and address.
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you. Dean, that's 810, Ben, Little Forest, Daley, North Carolina. Um, I just want to say, a lot of you know me. Um, this is my first meeting, the last meeting I'm here. Uh, I questioned Hank Rakers' PTI and performance of What Do I Have? Um, I'm on my third Pemo treatment, big start mental Pemo treatment. I was going to finish out my life here in Silo City. Um, I'm ready to move. I've had Wolf's Beach project on my road, commandeered my road for the past eight months. Signs, I had to come down the top to the mayor's where the signs blinking in my, uh, bedroom window in the dark. It wasn't even facing the road, it was facing my bedroom window. I went to the sheriff's department. Uh, I'm assuming Don had something to do with it because it was running the next day. But, but I, I'm sorry, I'm done. I don't shop in Silo City anymore. My gas has gone up here. I mean, I just think you're all making a big mistake, you know, with, with a chicken plant and Wolf's Beach. And, you know, I told Mayor Price when he was here, you were trying to kill me. And I, I just have a feeling that you're trying to kill the whole neighborhood. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Meeting ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm in Stan, I'm an area resident living on Hope for 21 inside the ECA. I'm also a professional musician, saxophone player, and I'm interested in being more proactive and being included and satisfied through entertainment activities and public service. I formerly performed at the Chasing Style City Live events. And there are a few of these types of events these days. And I'm part of performing at the Rams Gym or the NFT OR as an event to inspire the kids that don't live from there for sporting events to interest in music. Although this is predominantly a black neighborhood, I'm willing to provide a program with diverse styles for everyone. This could be me ordering sax with backing tracks for a sound system. Ten Two is scheduled for Saturday, October 12th, and it's about 3:00, 4:00 p.m. I had previously spoken to Tyler Stinson, person, director, and he suggested that I approach the board and discuss that.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you for wanting to be a part of what we have going on here. And we do have some events coming up, that's a night out. This would actually be probably something that you could go from neighborhood, neighborhood planning. And at some point, you might even be able to integrate yourself into the community where you can. T-S-A-Q. So, thank you for coming.
And, uh, what would be your answer to my request to put it at Rams Gym? I'll keep it.
It's been bombing up.
Okay.
You just have to be on a schedule. Is there anything scheduled that many of you?
What, what, what was the night for Rams?
On the 12th, from Saturday, at the Rams Gym, please floor. And I'd like to coordinate someone to produce a flyer and have a close to the gym.
Okay, yeah. And Tyler is, um, Tyler, the person, right director, he's actually on this meeting. And so I will make sure I email him tomorrow too. And does he have your contact information?
Uh, yes, but I have his, um, email and I also will tell him that I did if he ever goes to the board.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You just have to put a, probably put forth a, uh, program, I know what you want to play. Make sure that's approved, uh, by staff.
Uh, the records board?
Correct, yeah.
Back to the back.
Yeah. Have you contacted, um, any local high schools to try to see what the, uh, their arts programs offered? Because I know like, um, George Matthews has approved a arts program. And sometimes they are in need of a local musicians to assist.
I had tried with a previous teaching without much response, so I'm turning off. But I am a professional, you know, dance musician. And I'm sure that I could benefit if the kids and somebody did my, I'm telling you, I'm not looking for money. I just want to share my skills with the, uh, the majority.
We do have a new arts certification person that just came on board within the last two weeks. So I could, um, I could possibly give you his name.
Oh, that'd be great.
And, um, you can reach out to him because he does, he will do all the arts within the county.
Oh, that would be great, um, if that exception or?
I'll, I'll, I'll have to get it.
Can you make sure he, yeah, he'll be interested in playing? Could you invite him in there?
Yeah, thank you so much, and we will get in contact.
Okay, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion for the public comment.
The move to approve second, public comment, and all the things that have been known by sign of lot? All opposed have the same right, uh, most carries, old business, 5.1, Paul Braxton Gym, schedule, need pages.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, in our packet, uh, just to do a brief summary, we're going to break the rocks in the back about Paul Braxton Gym. It was constructed in 1930. It was a public function administration, administration building project back in the early. There were 3,000 human bodies left in the area. It was fired by the past September 2nd, the 1990. And it was a restoration project from the beginning of 2000. Um, it was research and, and donations and, uh. Uh, fast forward to today, what's the biggest problem with, uh, town or tenders? In January, the town reached out to county inspections, from the bias related to visible damage of the structure, subject structure. The county recommendation was to enlist the assistance of a structural engineer. The county did so, they hired a job by $2,800 to do a engineering analysis. Analysis was shared with county inspections department, two active. And this is the county's recommendation or, uh, the guidance that the county gave us on the building. Hire a designer professional or obtain permits, completely recommend repairs that's in that document. That document's attached to the package. Or, uh, the structure could likely be completed. And so that's, that's the status of the building, the guidance, the professionals and our county inspections department. So, uh, Mayor, I'm, there's several things in here for additional information to board. Staff, we forgot, this is something we talked about when we bring people to the board, having to pull with the, uh...
My concern looking through the packet is that we have one, um, estimate from Ellington for 121. But then we have two more from Mr. Culberson and Mr. Ramsey that indicate there's almost no way to estimate it. These are that massive, uh, deterioration repair and estimate half a million or more. And, um, Mr. Culberson goes on to state that the physical condition as well as the structural condition done, which I observed in person, is that the structure should be in here and be unsafe for public use of the public facility. So, um, I'm questioning with the estimate by Ellington, I think that comes in at 121 when everybody else is so much higher. And, um, I'm concerned that we just undertake just the repaired list to the Ellington, uh, estimate when everybody else has, has a much higher estimate basis and also statements such as it's unsafe for public use. I'm concerned that if someone gets injured in there after the fact, that we could be deemed that either no or should have done, that it was still not structural sound. So, uh, you know, they, I hate to say it, but based on what I'm seeing, I don't want to tear it down, but I don't really know, we have another option. I think if we, once we get into there, it's just going to be more and more and more and more.
Is this Ellington the same person that we did this?
Yes, I'm trying to, it's with two.
Yeah, yes. Those are big cops, everyone's there.
Yes, everything, and it was behind, you know, the name, behind, and you know, coming along.
Yeah, we almost had to, you know, we almost had to do after the, the codeine damage, codeine or something like that. Dark on?
Yes.
For true.
So, if that just gives me pause, and these pictures, of course, give me pause, I don't afford. Um, so, you know, I'm just wondering what we could do with this? If it was torn down, and we have a big open space, what could we do? What's the optimal use? How could we incorporate that into our match?
We have an estimate, what that may cost, if that amounts, we have comparison.
We don't have a demo estimate.
The structural engineer stated that it wasn't, um, I'm trying to find the paragraph that they stated that it wasn't. It conflicts with Culberson's statement that it's unfit for public use as far as regarding safety. Paragraph that they stated that from the PE, professional engineer. So, that conflicts, you know, the GCs are going to look at that project, they're going to be reluctant to take on projects that magnitude because nobody likes renovations in that industry, about new construction. So there's an incentive to push it off. The other person who put us 120 grand, that was the GC with town hall? What did they all say? Okay.
Are there, are there any, uh, I know in the past, we, we got issues with getting grants for repair, but more grants are, are out there, more value available for new construction. What's the situation there?
Still implications?
Yeah, you know, I mean, what kind of grant funding could we get for new construction versus renovation?
Take a look at the special page of the shore, see if there is grants for new gym.
Because that, that cost offset would help us make a decision. If there is cost offset.
When it was renovated the last time, what was that cost, anybody know?
It's about 300.
300,000. We've already put 300,000 in.
I'll tell you, I'm at school, Paul Braxton. Uh, when I was 12 years old, you know, I lived there until 11. And I started playing that gym, and it looks the exact same today than it looked 53 years ago except for the fact. So, I, I was 300,000 of those, but, you know, it's, it was the same thing in the back. My money is for cost. And I think, and I know that a lot of people say about this story, but we, I don't think that we should sink that kind of money in the fixing it, taxpayer money in fixing it. So I would be the one that, for him sake, I think that it should be in the models. Keep the bet.
Is there going to be a new sermon thing?
No, I lock it up.
Can I ask a question? Is that permitted?
No, you're not supposed to, not unless you have a law or two.
I just wanted to know if it's on the national, like, is it, it's local?
It is.
It is on the national register?
Well, it's on, it's on.
It's on, it's on.
Yeah.
Well, yes, and I think, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, like, I mean, I think that pulls into a whole different set of ballgame and stuff as far as tearing it down and things like, I think you have to get that approved and, like, take turns.
I think that was one of the things that we brought up a little bit at the last meeting was, uh, checking with, doing the national registry, just to see where we stand. Because I, I, hopefully, they would say that if it is such that you're not able to use, it's just standing there, that they would say, you know, it's not safe. And that's hopefully, that's what they, but...
Jack, you've done a lot of research on the different types of registries.
Yeah.
What's the situation, Mayor?
So, um, back when the, during the traditional building register, that was volunteer done by the town or the community to assist the number register. So that's what that is, it's a volunteer register to keep the employees in. The benefit of that is, really today is, uh, if you want to get tax things at a reasonable rate, that's what a lot of folks believe, uh, in restoring buildings. We did that in the high school building. The high school building used that national register status to get store tax credits to make that building work for, like, commercial purposes, that's what we use. All right, fast forward to, to that, past that. Uh, the town doesn't have a local restored register. You don't, you don't have any designated rooms for our store properties on national register. So, that's where it comes into play, whether you can make changes to a building or not. This, the national standard doesn't, uh, respect that, the national registration. So, um, that's, that's something of confusion, I think, for a lot of folks. But, uh, to my best, my knowledge, the, the national register doesn't stop us from doing that. And that's a, that's a month's choice.
And or restoring.
That's right. So I can double check that for the board and bring that back to light. But, but that is my, to best my knowledge, that's my understanding. So, and I'll give you an example, when Bowlin Chair was one of the owners of National Register buildings on Silo City, the owner destroyed them, without any questions. Now, just to use your example, that, that's how that works with National Register.
How long ago was that?
When Bowlin Chair came down?
10, 15 years ago, maybe.
And of course, it's really old, I mean, it was, this goes back to late.
But see, the other thing that I look at with, with the national registry might be on the national registry. And usually when buildings are on the national registry, you can go in, if you can look, you can't even go in this building.
No, that's, it's, it's been stored up for a reason. But I mean, I, I think, I do think it's going to come in way over the 120, it's probably 10 and a half to 10.
Well, I had a conversation with Drew Inspector, we had to, before I put the unit here, just to rehash our conversation. And that's exactly what he said, which was, that these prices, they get on the price that they can sit, when they unearth it, and you start going, you're going to sustain more things that you didn't, uh...
I think, I think it's overhyped, I mean, I mean, so unless there's somebody splitting the bill for us, I'd be inclined to figure out what else we could do with that space.
But I'll just, I made a note of that when you said that, what does the national plan say? The national plan says we've got a gym there. I think that we probably would like to have a gym back, possibly. And so, um, that's why, that's why I just come off the cuff, I feel like that's probably the next thing is to place a, a new modern gym that meets all the standards that we were wanting, the size standards, the...
If, what if we expand the footprint to include the outdoor basketball court and have one really nice big multi-use facility? Gymnasium, where that gym would go with arts, somewhere we could put on both performances inside. Right now, all we have is a little stadium, so I'd rather...
I thought parks after day, they're like, we need spaces to do these activities.
I'm not talking about a rec center, that's a very park thing, but just a nice indoor space. And we have issues right now with voting, we're over at, we're over at, um, the Moose Hock in Alrey, and there was issues last time with people crossing traffic and it being unsafe. So, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud, this is spitballing, but, you know, if we tear it down, we have a big space, particularly if we encompass the outdoor basketball court.
You want to get a test from the therapist?
I could have any of them tested, that would be really easy to find.
Can we also look into the various competing grants that might be out there?
Is that something that our fire department could look at, given, um...
We found out if, uh, the fire chief is interested in doing a frame to control burn?
Yes.
Might be a lot of lead paint, man.
Yeah, we'll check on that, and then also maybe give him a call, talk to him.
I'll help with the 300,000 dollar, I don't know where he got that.
Yes, ma'am, you're back. Excuse me?
Uh, she was first up here. Okay, did you want me to answer about the grants?
Sure, if you have, yeah, yeah.
So, restoration grants through the national registry could not apply to this one? You have to sort of a certain percentage of what it actually looks like right now, using the same materials. So, it's not permanent on that.
That's accurate.
Yeah, that's, you won't be getting that covered, based on that.
Yeah.
Um, there are several grants for the newly ones, anything park related, there's a lot of different grants for park related items, especially the gym.
To build, to build. New construction.
Yes.
And we ran into that too when we looked at Rams Gym, which is a older gym, we, we were able to grant for repair of the roof.
Yeah, they go, they employ the repairs, purchase a new one, and it's a new recreation space. So, um, the portion of the flood mitigation project that we've been working on for Love's Creek, 122, got the park that, which is a park grant to acquire land, which can actually do a few of the things. That grant still has the ability to add various park grants as well.
I think, I think things align up to where we're going, where we're going.
Yeah, they align.
Especially if we can do a controlled burn, it may have cost.
Excuse me? Probably need to do a, some kind of trial to see if the asbestos in the building, because it's as old as it is, that's pretty costly if you had to remove, like, insulation, this, 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 that, that's pretty costly. So you need to take better considerations.
It's only the current, yeah, it's not the best system.
Oh, yeah. Well, um, is there, all right, so this gym was donated, it was, it's a family, it's named after the Braxton family, right? Is it still here? So then the, the benefit, hey, that's a good point. The, Paul, the neighbor, Paul Braxton, you know, certain, I haven't, maybe I didn't see it right now. So that, that's the right thing to talk about.
Yeah, I don't necessarily, these, these programs, okay.
But the partner still bears fame, so.
Braxton, that.
Our partner, that's...
Then it's time, you will.
I think that if money that the town's, that's taxpayer money should be towards something that is new, that, um, we can look at and, and, you know, make a list of the things that we want in this building, what it can do for the tank, instead of something that we're just going to throw money into and it's still going to be the same old building. That's my view.
All right, I agree with that.
Okay.
You just want to table it, to get more information?
Or do you need a...
I think, uh, I think I would bring back some information from board to, uh, grants, demo, assets to survey costs, all those costs, there's no way to go in that right.
And also, if chief can do a controlled burn, I guess an issue there on burns, is there asbestos in the building? I'm assuming that will affect the, the burn?
I wonder if that building even has any type of insulation. It was built, what year was it built, Jack?
As cold as it is, I doubt it's gonna snow.
Yeah, I think that was really, um, came in like the 70s, 60s and 70s, but...
It's a cold building.
Jack, do we have any other buildings like that with cross faces? Any town buildings with cross faces? Lot of buildings? I know it's kind of random, that's on the structural report, but the main, the main, um, issue the building has is that moisture was not controlled in that space, and it's a lot of damage. I just don't know if we have any other buildings where that's currently happening. We don't know it's occurring, because this is arguably preventable with mitigation shadowings, like, just like a vapor barrier, structural, we noted that the vapor barrier was not well installed and was missing in most spaces. Um, and then the clapboard siding that was rotting on the back end was most likely because there are no gutters installed, as well as the structural damage at the front of the building, um, definitely because there's no gutters installed. It caused a, you know, might be got to, for us to look at other assets that we have to make sure that we can set from the... You know, might be got to, for us to look at other assets that we have to make sure that we can set them to go for the damage. Anybody have hearing for this?
Yeah, that's part of our, um, building and grants plans for each of our building and making sure that we have adequate, um, contracts and are doing adequate inspections.
I'm not trying to rip anybody, you know, this is, this could have been the best, that's all.
Yeah. And Town Hall is part of the building.
I think I got my words to say, I can mention. All right. Table.
Uh, I want to go to that park, get to see, they did this shit in that room too.
Okay, um, the middle is pretty simple, so I, I will advance it a little. Uh, I think the town will need a contract to do a large renovation going on in the park. We did a couple wetlands, there was two, um, a grant through the state agency, we also got a grant from Chad, uh, Soulwater Conservation. We did the buffer on, there were two different grants, two different projects that they done at the same time. And it was about to put more quality inside the city, and it's included those three more to the city. And so the town went to agree to do the buffer, um, there was, uh, funding, it was used to pay for the plants. A lot of volunteer hours that went in to put these things together in the buffer. And so from 2018 to this year, it seemed like annually we had problems maintaining that buffer to the standard of, of animal protection. And, um, this year, we removed it, we removed the buffer this year. And we got the letter from, uh, the town, Soulwater Conservation, giving us a couple of options. And one of them is to pay the perverted amount of the grants left, $1,723, or repair the repairing road for a design and construction. And so that's, that's what the funding will receive. I'll add one other thing that's not here that I learned since that last meeting. I thought that we might need to have a decision tonight on this too then. But, uh, we had a conversation with, uh, Soulwater Friday and they're okay with us, uh, yeah, I think it's more information, working with them to see what it might cost to, to plant the buffer. And, uh, and what that expectation would be and if that expectation would meet the town standards. But I think, one, there will be a cost problem with the buffer back, but maintaining the buffer is what's most important, I think, to, to the town and to the whole reserve. Uh, if you allow me, uh, and staff and, uh, Major Sutcliffe, she's been working with us, she's our, uh, one of our consultant staffs at Soulwater for grants and stuff like that, so let us come together with a plan to share with you before we make a decision soon. That would be my advice, or my recommendation, I guess you should have it. I might answer you questions at this time. But we do have no time to come back to you at the next meeting, maybe sixteen. Then we would want to meet on this. You're not ready to make that decision, but I, I think, without some more information.
I'd like some more information.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Go ahead, take care.
I did have a comment about, uh, Golden Land Park after it was, uh, screwed up and done. I had so many people making point to tell me how good it was.
Yes.
And they were so glad to see that stuff out of the way, and I bet they knew. So only if I keep that in mind.
Well, and, and I want to get, I want to focus on that a little bit more. Because I think sending out with only two people on the board, when this first came up about, I don't know, close to ten years ago now, and there was actually a grand design rendering that was patented from us, about what this would look like, and it didn't turn out anything like that.
Nothing.
So when you're having those conversations, um, it's because of the fact that what was promised was not fulfilled. And, and, and it sounds, it got to where the townspeople felt unsafe using the park because of email and over. Uh, so, you know, yes, I, I don't want to be considered in non-compliance with the grants, but I think there's, I think there's something on both sides here. I don't think it's, I don't think you can just point and say, oh, it's all cited, not compliant, apparently. Yeah, there were safety issues. There were, there were issues brought up by town people that would be different, so.
And it's that nice town with a long trail and you can see the other side. And, and you don't feel like a snake's going to jump out anywhere.
You don't have to be worried about, uh, your kid disappearing behind all these windows you can't see and one of your kids coming out on the other side while you're at the park with your infant pushing this way.
So if we're not in compliance check, does that mean that we'll be penalized or we won't be able to get grants this easily through the CCAP?
So I wouldn't make an answer to this question, but that's what I'm understanding. I think there's two or threefold here. One, if we're applying for a grant, the same kind of grant as this was, the CCAP, we would lose points on the map because we, we didn't finish or didn't complete a grant like we're supposed to. But what I'm understanding, and I always may speak to you because I don't know, is we might be affected by other grants as well. They could see us and that. Maybe you can explain that a little bit for me.
So when you do an application for any grant, one of the primary questions is, is have you ever defaulted on any terms of a grant or loan that you ever came into the past? You would have to say yes, and sometimes they did not ask for reasons, and sometimes it's automatically disqualified. Um, this one specifically is 311 points off of this grant, but others may be submitted and could be more.
Well, I think we should work it out.
I'm running something for the board to.
Right back.
The hope is that the judge decision can see.
All right, that's the next. All right, new business. Six point one, Halloween's, animal lawn. Amazing.
I'll cover this one, uh, Tim, I can go with that, so I can tell this important, this is, it was on the house as well, so, um, we've been abating, uh, grass for everything that has been discovered. Uh, we've, we've had a success hiring contractors in the past to help us with that. Recently, we've not had that success. And then our town authority allows us to choose a contractor to abate distances or in full reason to pay. And we never really chose that route on the board. And, uh, I've been thinking about it for a couple of years now and thought that it might be an opportunity. And I've got the public work staff, uh, they're, they're ready for it. We did a trial run across the road about a week or so ago. Uh, we were with the grass that had been mowed, uh, on the sidewalk here downtown on the sidewalk, and it worked out well. And so, um, the next request is to allow us to continue our research process, uh, but get approval from the town board to allow town employees to go and property and abate. Uh, without having that abatement by, by, just for force, the other option is to do civil development. And the grass doesn't get nothing, it gets taller and a higher wind to go to pick in the cord and it's more complicated, takes on and you're not even able to abate. So, uh, staff recommendation to get the job done is a lot of public work staff that have been there. But that's part of it. And I just wanted you to know what the fee that we're going, just like we did for, uh, junk, a curbside waste pickup, this is very similar. There's a chart we usually follow the FEMA standards. And so, um, so we're on the same page, a minimum size lot, which would be similar around a hundred eighty dollars plus two hundred twenty. So if the town mowed it, it's going to be around four hundred. So that would be the, the cost. The bait cost is what it costs to process it. And the, and the mowing cost is the FEMA fees, and that's about a minimum of about two hundred twenty dollars. And so looking for board to give us guidance on it, moving forward that, I think we're at the calendar of the mowing year, but we still have a period of next year. And then the other new services that they signed.
And so we need to modify our, our ordinance to.
Orders are.
Does that mean?
The order says, I, I printed it off, it says in our ordinance that, uh, uh, we can maybe, new services be remedied by having employees or contractors in the town to go from the premises. So it's already in the ordinance. I just wanted to make sure we're doing something new.
So we just have to modify our standard.
Yeah, and it would be.
Could that be the motion for the rest?
I think that motion from the board would be great, that, that just support this, uh, this new, that, this new process.
Uh, two hundred twenty-two dollars is a minimum for the states? Okay, I just thought that was really high considering, um, maybe it's a really small piece of land. Um, is there any way to incorporate like some incremental sizing in there, like quarter acre, half acre, do it per quarter acre type thing and we charge them less?
It'd be.
It was like, I, I know somebody brought up the, um, the sidewalk along the old tire place. Are we going to charge them four hundred dollars and mow that grass because they're a repeat offender? And then my other question is, is it generally the same offenders or you have new ones pop up? Same people on them?
It's, uh, it's very rarely, when folks know that they got to pay this, usually they take care of it. So we've not done this a whole lot, even when we had a contractor do less than a dozen, uh, properties that were made over a couple of years.
Over a couple of years?
So very rarely does this happen. And so the, the cost of the, somebody brought up, because I don't want to charge somebody something the board is not going to come with, but that numbers are based on, uh, FEMA rates. So it's, uh, would be two hours of a maintenance worker. It would be, uh, uh, one truck, trailer, mowing, trimming. And so that's, those are the standards. That's what, that's how you go with it. So we can, yeah, we can modify, but that might be consistent whatever we do.
Sure.
But the, uh, those standards, that, that's just an example for a particular size, particular quantity, I guess, right? Not for every size lot?
No, that would be minimal. So we, we're not going by lot size, we're going by time.
Right.
Time, just do it.
So the quantity, is that an hour? Is that what that is? Is it more?
Well, that's, that's an hour, that's time.
So two workers going out with a truck or trailer, the estimate for one hour is two twenty-two.
I want to play a little bit.
I just feel like it's pretty high, um, especially considering the strength of our economy, people living check to check. More than half Americans live check to check. I'm not sure outlook in Southern City, but I imagine it's more students or demographics and generally we're closer to the property line. I just wouldn't want to pinch anybody for not being able to mow the lawn. I've actually spoke to a constituent online complaining about this, this is well before this was mentioned, but she's just an old lady and she was evidently receiving violations of the tall grass ordinance. I was like, I wish I could help you, you know?
I think the point of it is to have them get mowed, yeah.
She looks too far for me to bring a mower down there. College student.
I do worry, I think you're right on, and I think that's the way we're, we're in the dark. First of all, it's, you get a ten day notice, you get ten days to do it. And if you have, have them from, whether the lawn mowers are out or maybe it's some kind of situation, there's a following number, contact the political office and say, I need to make sure three or four, five days. They're going to give it to you.
So they're going to give them some.
Yes, they. When you, when you got an exact, uh, uh, tape from you, so you have, yeah, we can go beyond, ten is the minimum, you can't go four, ten days. Right after that, and it is, and I think you've done a pretty good job of working with residents and, and property owners.
Okay, just two, two more points. If someone, um, had a address and it was outside our city and they, would they send them a letter to their address?
Ask that question out.
If, if they lived outside of the city limit, say they own a lot and they're, you know, violation of this order, are they going to get a letter sent to them and they're not going to get a lot of time for that to go through USDF?
Right.
So, uh. Getting a little more leniency there?
So the, the, the clock starts with David on that, right?
Yeah.
So that's, um, the letter is going to be mailed to the property. They also post it on the site. Even if it's a vacant monitoring property, so they can probably do that, but if they've got an email address, they would email them as well. So there's, uh, multiple ways we know about it.
Okay, I think if we're going to exercise this, this policy, then we have to, we have to hold DOTs, especially the registered among southern states. They're super negligent about mowing their own grass and then for we to ask these people to mow their lawns, they're also being negligent. We can't get the state to know this, just for example. Doesn't go bad on us.
Well, actually working on that process, trying to work with DOT and get some things done to where, uh, they will be responsible, uh, in the same manner that residents were. And the, the, the first question you ask, I got a letter, I lived around it, and I did get a letter a lot ahead of you. It was a hundred dollars a day, so, you know, uh.
But, and the, the purpose though is to have the stick big enough to where you don't have to swing it in sack throat, that's right. And so I think, so I'm okay with using the FEMA rates. Um, now if you want to give more than ten days, if you want to give fifteen, make sure they received it, I'm okay with upping it to ten, fifteen. But, uh, uh, and, and we're going to put the rights in the letter that they get, like, hey, if you don't do this, we're going to come out and mow this, what you got back? Will you put that in the letter so they all know this?
I did think we want to put it in a press release if we put it out.
I think we should put it in the letter.
We won't know how much will be till we get out of the job. And so that, that's why I really give them that. Uh, the public works crew will go out and they'll keep up with their time. And when they're done, then they'll, they'll log that in.
We could tell them in the letter, this is the minimum.
Yeah, I could do that.
Um, to incentivize them to, to fix it.
Man, for example, if we did fifteen days of first violation and then repeat offender get ten.
I'm okay with that.
That's a, that's a town code change.
It's a code change.
It's a code change.
I think, let's just pick it, pick it up within the system.
Run out of ten days.
Fifty, I'll go fifteen then? That's not a code change, it's a code change if it's.
That's just, yeah, it's, uh, if you just pick one day as procedure, right? We just pick one timeframe, it's just procedure, correct?
Okay.
I think that says ten day.
Ten, okay.
Ten days it is.
But as I say, if we're going to work with, you know, what's happening.
And, and, and let me add.
So we can see what we're doing, we need to.
Let me add this, the town's been real good, especially, uh, and I, I'll say it's watching day to day operations with the water bills. Uh, there's some water bills that came in here at two thousand dollars, eighteen hundred dollars, sixteen hundred dollars, so forth and so on. And there's been some water that has been cut off. And the town has been real good with the citizens and adjusting those bills and working with the customer to make sure that they had, uh, water. So it, it, with, the town is not in the business of trying to gouge anybody because I watched these ladies and gentlemen work and work diligently to help.
And just so you know, it's, it's payment plans, it's not writing off entire amounts, it's payment plans. We're not just saying, hey, no, you're not paying us, it's payment plans.
Yeah, thank you, John, but he's been good in, in making that work for people and in his work. So everybody has basically what they need to, to, to help. I just wanted to make that point.
Okay. I'd like a motion to approve the tall grass breaking SOP effective September the third, twenty twenty-four.
Certainly, certainly, probably seven that we, uh, adopt the SOP for tall grass and, and rate it. All the things that have been done by, signed by, all those have been the same, right?
Yeah.
One name, motion carried. All right.
Who was the second mayor?
A second.
Okay.
We are now down to our presentation, seven point one.
Do you want more of the sign there?
Town hall signing.
Excuse me. So at the last meeting, we talked about, um, bringing back to the board some different signage options, signage options, uh, message board signage, um, similar to what you see across the street at the church. And what I provided to you in the photos are four different types that are around town here. And what these signs have the capability of doing is you can put messages on them, meeting messages, um, chicken festivals, note of anything, any types of different, um, messages. And so we have obtained one quote, um, just to get a roundabout figure of what we're, a starting price of what we're looking at for sim, for, um, signs that are similar, and we would want something probably to match the granite with Town Hall, but again, that would be up to y'all. Um, the starting price is, um, thirty-four thousand dollars installed. And, um, that would not include the stone work. Um, that would be a separate, um, separate price.
So the brickers, that's just, so thirty-four thousand would be for something like a first, uh, test?
Yes, something similar to first baptism or community.
So stone and brick work is additional?
Yes, probably.
How much does the church pay for those?
Um, I'm not certain, I'm not certain.
Some ball figures, twenty-five, thirty-five.
What church?
Some of the churches.
Yeah, the Journey Church, for instance, they, um, many of the people that go to church there, they did the brick work and the stone work themselves. So they were able to save on that cost. So, but again, the thirty-four thousand is one more like the community, um, the Community Baptist Church sign.
Just as long as it's big enough for people to see it from the road, it looks basic. I mean, I'm okay with the first baptism community.
Okay. And what I would like to do, um, however y'all want to proceed, would we would bring signage industries back out. They have engineers and they would come out and they would draw. They have engineers and they would come out and they would draw plans and per our sign ordinance and give us exact specifications. Then if you wanted to do stone granite, then Chatham Monument would help with that process. And probably Chris Culberson or whoever else we got to lay the stone and complete the project. But I would like to come back with some prices at the next meeting for y'all.
Is that the most traffic you think on Second for a sign as opposed to Robyn Street?
Doc, what do you?
It wouldn't be on town property.
Yeah, we would have to go on town property, north, which is north Second.
So Second has the most traffic down town, Second Avenue. Or vehicle traffic, it's, it's a higher number than Robyn. Robyn would be Second though.
So you're just gonna get some.
Yes, yes.
All right, now we are at our presentation.
Mayor Charlie Condis is our speaker. Um, turning about having this doing what's working with us on this uh murder, I made him uh, 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 control. Um, and then another staff there as well. Uh, Charles Archer Kirk and Dick with Santa and myself, Chris is here as well. So we've got staff to help answer questions, so I'll let them all take over.
Thank you, Jack. Uh, good evening, Mayor. Good to be back with you again. So um, I'm here to give you an update on where we are with our virgin negotiations and kind of schedule going forward. So we've been working on this now for, what, ten months or so. We recall that the general assembly appropriated money for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. Uh, they can be conditioned it on sour city entering an agreement with Sanford to manage and be the agent to that project. We all approved that last November. Um, and that process, I understand, is well underway, everything's going smoothly. Um, also, we have a contract, as you know, um Pittsburgh, opened last August to move their water sewer utility building with Sanford. And that agreement called for implementation and integration by June thirtieth, again, the last fiscal year. And checking who's bizarre, it sounds like everything has gone very, very smoothly. Um, the employees from Pittsburgh have moved over and are now working for Sanford. And while reports are very happy with that transition. Um, you also may be aware of Chatham County has begun conversations with Sanford, possibly taking over um the Chatham County water system. And in that, if that happens and if you approve a merger and Sanford approves it, that of course was now branded as Tri River Water from the city of Sanford. Will be the water sewer utility provider, public utility provider in Chatham County. Talk a little bit about what we see as the benefits of having that kind of regional operation as opposed to the smaller systems, um the legacy historic system. So I'm just gonna go through and just touch on some of the key points in the agreement. Nothing has changed significantly. Um, a little bit of an open issue, that's only a technical issue, dealing with debt. Um, we've got on council working to make sure that we're transitioning the town's debt in a way that's both legal and makes financial sense. Um, so a little bit of work still to do to nail down the debt issue. But beyond that, as I explained previously, I think about this as basically taking this whole enterprise, this water sewer enterprise that sour city has owned and operated. Um, and handing off to Sanford, they take a little. Last time here, um physical access, employees, um they assume all contractual obligations, they step into the role of county board commissioners in terms of governance and weight setting. Um, I'll touch on a couple of things that um provides some, some checks balances and some protections. Um, but, but this transaction contemplating conveying all real property as well as all equipment, personal property that sour city currently owns and uses to run the water sewer utility and transfer that over to Sanford. Um, Sanford and the city council will be responsible for standard rates and managing and operating the system. There is a requirement in the agreement that for increasing rates and the less than once a year, uh they consult with the town about the plans. Um, now there's, they don't have the right to just arbitrarily set rates. It's all based on models, rate setting models. It's, it's intended to be and it needs to be self-sustaining enterprise. One of the key provisions that we have in the agreement is that either the Sanford general fund or the sour city general fund uh is at risk, is obligated to pay anything. Um, so um, if there's one minor, uh Jack corrected me on this last week, one minor thing is based on cost allocation, um indirect cost of certain management positions. Some of those costs are fractional, are charged right now through utility funds and the resources from utility fund, of course, from your, from Sanford. Um, so the, um, the support to sort of general fund operations attributable to utility, that would go away. I, I don't know if it is implied, but I would expect it would be significant.
Uh, it was significant in previous years and this current year it's dropped down dramatically.
Um, the employees, um, Mr. Zar and his folks have already met with the employees. Uh, they are obligated under contract to make employment offers to all employees in the water sewer utility. Um, with compensation benefits no less than what they're conceding. Understanding is a vast majority or significant number, maybe all of the Pittsburgh employees came out better than they were as Pittsburgh employees. And I would not be surprised, I'm not promising that, and I would not be surprised that that's not the case with your current employees. Um, the agreement establishes a service area, um current and future town limits, um where rates would be set self-sustaining within that area. So just like the general funds aren't at risk and are not subsidizing this. Understanding that Sanford is unwilling to let its current rate payers subsidize sour city with it, if that was the case in Pittsburgh as well. Um, it will take some time, but there is a goal to achieve what we call rate parity, where eventually over time, the economies of scale and then a more complete integration and interconnection of these systems. The goal is to have um rate parity, same rates across all the equivalent customers that Tri Water serves, Tri River Water serves. Um, Sanford standards and policies will apply in the town. What that means is uh, they can't, um, they cannot apply policies and standards that are less than what they apply within Sanford. So it's sort of um equal footing in terms of how they apply their standards and policies here, just like they do back there. Um, you, you all know that there's an outstanding special order of consent that the town entered into, DEQ. Um, there's work, there's language agreement that obligates work to get some relief. Um, lawyers for Sanford who have extensive environmental experience have already been discussing. Um, I don't know, I don't think we've had any changes before you're asked to vote on the agreement, but hopefully not, not longer after. There's gonna be some relief through a modification that we have received. Um, the stakeholders have been consulted and we're hopeful about that. Um, Sanford will be obligated to continue to seek grants and other sources of funding for the capital needs. Um, you all know that stepping to Manhattan, you need the state appropriate is just step one. The capital needs are significant and frankly can't be, can't be paid for by the rate payers, it's just, it's too onus. So there is going to be needed assistance in the state and other sources of grant payments uh over the next X number of years to get as low as we need to be going forward. Um, they're required to maintain in-person bill collection um at the current location or another location that is equivalent. We understand how important, how important it is for many of your constituents to be able to easily access, oftentimes with cash, uh payment of the water sewer bills. Um, we're trying to, trying to take care of those folks as well. Um, I mentioned the, I've seen issues that we're also working hard to get the audits caught up. That's an interest and concern of Sanford, they want to make sure that, um, they know how this is gonna fall into their reporting, their audits. And they wanna be comfortable with that and keep them in good shape.
Uh, yeah, twenty-two should be accepted by the state momentarily, but uh Sanford has drafts of twenty-three and uh had set a draft of twenty-four for water sewer funds in July and need updated for AP and everything for.
So to catch an example, a lot of what's been going on the last four, six months, Sanford's doing to speak diligence. They need to understand um what it is exactly. Not only the physical plan, but the contracts, the law buildings. Uh, and again, there's nothing that has been identified from my knowledge that causes them concern or is a potential deal killer. But they have to do their due diligence. They need to understand exactly what it is taking on, uh be prepared for the big one, um to take it on and not have any surprises that we're not on earth to this price. So that's a lot of what's been going on. Uh, the basic agreement has been pretty static um over the last four or five months. And other than cleaning up the debt language, maybe one or two other items dealing with, um, the audits, I think we're in pretty good shape. Now, um, there is a short power point that I guess they got working, right?
We got it.
We could flip through those real quick, I'll address a couple of issues and then take any questions. And certainly, Charles Archer's with Freeze and Nichols and they have been consulting with me. And they're facilitators, they've done a great job with Pittsburgh, sour and now with Chatham. And sort of facilitating conversations as well as providing really good technical support. If you have any technical questions, I will refer to these gentlemen, but um this is a map that um Charles and his group have prepared. That shows major, um, future and some, some current uh projects and plans that kind of shows you how interconnected uh the goal is to be between Pittsburgh, sour city, down to Mon, to Monterey. Um, and then fast side down to Sanford and also picking up Goldston and going to the west into, I guess that's Randolph County. And you can see how this, at least the meeting kind of screams for regionalization. Um, as opposed to try and piece together water and sewer services to the utility. Um, and, and that's sort of a, a bit of a vision for a longer term goal that will demonstrate. Um, even, even preliminary conversations, you may be aware that Durham, the city of Durham is working on a western intake project. Um, that Chatham County was interested in and if, if Chad emerges, it's quite possible that Sanford steps in and works on that. That goes up to the northeast and provides sort of redundancies and robustness in terms of water supply and wastewater treatment capacity. Next slide. Um, there is the current map of the, uh, why I take it back? Okay, so um you may have heard or caught wind of um an eighty-twenty degree that Chatham County enter into with Sanford back in Sanford, I believe, first or one of the first extension of utilities in Chatham County. One of the things that cities um do across the state and country for that matter is um you, you really aren't looking to make money on your utility. It's a break even profit to the sheep. Um, where you make your money is on the development and the incremental property taxes that result from the development and the investments that private sector makes when you have capacities available. So because um sour city, I'm sorry, Sanford coming into Chatham County, um it's not, it's not being, those areas are not being announced. Um, and they don't derive any direct tax benefit. The county and Sanford, in two thousand and seventeen, negotiated an agreement where twenty percent of the incremental taxes, the new taxes that but for Sanford extending the lines would not have occurred. That twenty percent of that revenue is shared by Chatham County with Sanford. Sanford is asked for the same arrangement um on the western part of the county and Chatham County Board Commissioners last month did approve that. Has no effect on you directly. Um, you're not being asked to share any part of your tax revenue that comes from this. Chatham County did agree to do that. They defined the area, it's only for new commercial industrial um development, not residential. Uh, but that's something Commissioners have approved and it will be sent over to Sanford or their um city council to vote on it. Next slide. So here's sort of some highlights, I've touched upon some, if not all of these, on the benefits of, of regionalization. You've got system resiliency, redundancy, uh highway four point one plan alignment and clearly DEQ, not just the DEQ, but general assembly. Um, clearly is interested in seeing this regionalization effort take place. Um, they made significant investments and are wanting to make sure that um those investments pay off with growth. And that requires capacity, water and sewer capacity. Uh, strategic value, again, transfers all obligations. I mean, they look at this as, boy, what are you giving away? They don't think you're giving away headaches, right? Um, water and sewer utilities sometimes present headaches and these headaches will not yours. You might want to keep those headaches, but Sanford is, is then the ones, they're the ones who have to make all this work. Again, with input and a conversation with you and yourself. Um, I mentioned the employment opportunities for your employees and the need to get funding for future capital projects that I don't think would be possible in the absence of this merger. Um, we mentioned economies of scale of having a larger regional system, uh incremental costs are shared over greater, um, greater weight paying base. Um, we've got efficiency in systems and I mentioned already several times grant funding. So I will stop there, the, the current schedule, it's gonna feel fast for you, but we've worked hard on this. Um, the current schedule considers the possibility of presenting this to you for a vote on October seventh. That's our, our schedule A. Um, some, some things that will fall in place, Chatham County drew here up on the last few weeks after the content gave it green light. But there, there's a relatively simple compared to Pittsburgh or sour city. In fact, um, I would say that the universe has been to me annually relatively simple since we filed a ground already with Pittsburgh. We, we learned how to do this, we were starting from scratch there and so much of it is just replicating what's already worked. Um, but it's, um, October seventh, we pegged October twenty-first as a backup date. Um, if it is vote time on the seventh, Chatham County may be voting for Commissioners that same night. Um, and if not, it would also be hit back on October twenty-first. If it hit the first day, we contemplate Sanford City Council voting on both merger agreements as well as the eight-twenty. We're holding on to that. The eight-twenty, by the way, is contingent on their being merged. Um, so um if that happens, we may have a vote by the end of October. Um, the fallback is they have it coming November, um, before the new Commissioners take office in Chatham County. If, if they really wanted to put a vote on this, it, it's gonna happen in Chatham County before the new board comes in. So happy to take any questions and I'm, I'm sure Vic can speak to anything.
Real quickly, uh, to the citizens, if you have any question, Kimberly has the sign sheet. Don't mind signing in right quick because we're all gonna take questions from the public. Uh, so if you would do that, okay.
Wouldn't you say that Vic was, was the county agreement?
Yeah, I pulled it up. So um option one, I call A, calls for this, for this board, any board of commissioners to vote on it on October seventh. And if that all happens, Sanford is pegged October fifteenth as their vote merger agreements in the eight-twenty range.
Is the county agreement, county wide agreement gonna be substantially same anymore similar to ours?
Absolutely. Absolutely. In fact, it'll be a little bit simpler because it doesn't have to deal with the SOC. Um, it's, it's just a lot cleaner.
Because of the SOC.
Yeah.
But otherwise, substantially similar in other respects.
Which is also substantially similar to what we're.
To Sanford.
Yeah. The backup dates, if it slips to October twenty-first, that would be both the sour city board commissioners and the Chatham County board commissioners. And then Sanford is identified on November fifth or the nineteenth.
So basically our first meeting.
Correct. Correct. My turn, sir. The court said, yes, the seven. Yes. There's a workshop in Sanford on the eighth where they would then um give a status report on board, this board's action and the board commissioner's action.
And then the county was.
Are they looking for us to implement SDF, SDF, excuse me, trial?
Yes, so Sanford's request, um, and I think that Vic can speak for this. They really want to see a standardization from Pittsburgh, sour city and Chatham County on USDFs. And um they want it set where they need to be at this point in time, so they don't have to turn around and need to change it in a way. And also, I think it's important from a legal standpoint, the lawyers right now, you, you did the, if the SDF study was done from you. So because the way law works, you think that illegally say this board needs to set the SDF in, in reliance on the study that was done. And then Sanford will immediately, as part of their crew of merger, set their SDF because it now would then become their race. That they will set it exactly as where you set it, um, as you hand this utility over to them.
And I imagine that'll be contributing to the rate parity issue because the town has foreign construction. Are they gonna want to see our SDF higher than a town with better housing quality?
I think relying on it to be all the same. The problem with it is you don't get the SDF until it develops. You know, you can't add development until you've got the assets.
Are you talking figures, is it eighteen thousand?
Fifteen, five?
Yeah.
Fifteen, five. Imagine nothing. It says eight waters, seven five hundred.
All right. Say it again, sorry?
Eight thousand waters, seven five hundred.
Okay. Jack, I spoke to you about the potential for people living at the city limits to be able to have private utilities. Bob, will folks be able to have private utilities regarding sewer and water in the city limits? Would this agreement have any con...
Confusion with that? You talking about like a well?
Well, subject system.
I don't think that's a well or a town.
Yeah, I would think that's actually more of something that you might want to consider. Do you want, people on subject tanks inside your city limit? Does a policy decide? We can do either way, but I hope that if you'd want to seriously consider that, is that really what you want to do? Because it sets them up for the future. Yeah, the way, Chatham County is not the best source for subject tanks and those kinds of things, that they do, they have a problem, they just push point of problem into the future and do what you want that in your city.
And we currently have some knowings to us that just recently found out in the last couple of weeks. And the boy previously had tried to get these people to tack, and they did not, but now it's becoming more of an issue.
Yeah, post-construction.
Backyard, yeah. So I don't think that's something that we have options, not options.
And there are people in Sauer City that have wells, but they use them primarily for water and their plants. It's not connected.
And there are too, aren't there? There are less.
I was thinking we had some kind of rule for even so many freaks you had in there.
That's in our county. Most of our county, I have to talk, our county would talk about proximity to a public water line you need to connect to.
Yeah, of course.
Beyond that, and it's, Chris's ear, I think he's developed some of that with those as well. We have something similar, but we consider that we have the authority to make someone connect. We don't necessarily make them connect. We're much more of a, we have a service available to, we'd like to measure, got approach to that. So we don't aggressively pursue that. As to the question of, we do have people with wells as long as it's not connected with the house and they use it for our purposes. That's a special way to do this.
Anything else on the board? Call public court. All right, Mr. Fitz?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of questions. Want to go with that? Just a couple of questions. So when I was reading the contract, and you glossed over it, Sauer City is giving everything to Sanford, but the way I read the contract, and again, the fines, is that what you're considering debt, the outstanding fines? When I read the contract, it said that Sauer City would be responsible for any and all fines. Is that correct?
So two issues that you raised, let me separate them out.
Sure.
Debt, I refer to debt, that is money that is borrowed to pay for facilities. So think about that like a mortgage, right? It has to separate them from fines. The extent that there are any fines, let me pursue with the special order of consent for any other reasons, they got to be paid for out of the utility, right? It's not going to be paid for by the general fund, the taxpayers in Sauer City. It's not going to be paid for by the rate payers or the taxpayers in Sanford because any fines that come out of that, and one of the things that's being negotiated is to try to get relief from the potential of fines. But the extent of our funds, that will fall on, if the town didn't transfer the utility, it would fall on town security, and if it transfers the utility, it'll fall on the legacy town portion of the customers and the town of Sauer City.
So the town of Sauer City will always be responsible for the fines?
The rate payers, not the taxpayers. I mean, they overlap, obviously, but the water and sewer enterprise is a standalone enterprise right now, but it's not subsidized by the general fund or the taxpayers. So to the extent that there are any fines, they will have to be paid for on the utility, just like it would have been if there wasn't a merger. So where it falls doesn't change as a result of the merger.
Just in the form of a higher rate revenue?
So Sanford isn't responsible for any fines that are incurred after the merger?
Their rate payers are not going to be responsible for any pre-existing obligations that fell to Sauer City, including any fines that come out of the SOC.
But it's not in perpetuity. I mean, once, what?
Yeah, eventually, as I mentioned before, when we get to rate parity and we've really integrated Pittsburgh, Sauer City, all into Dry River Water, we can't predict when it's going to be. It's going to take some time. It's a lot of work if you need to get that going. Gets there, then it will be an integrated consolidated utility system, and all costs will be spread equally amongst all the rate payers.
I appreciate that. And one final question. So Sauer City has an inside the town and outside the town rate. So if the water's coming from Sanford, is everything going to be outside the town?
No. No, they'll continue to maintain the inside-outside rates, right? And also leverage all of this brand session to bring new customers that are not in its town when it's into the town, so then the town gets to benefit from the property taxes.
All right, and I said one final, but one final. But are you able to pull that graph up with the water line again or not?
I can't.
I saw two water lines coming in the Wolf Speed, but I didn't see any sewage line.
I'm going to turn it over to my technical officer.
Thank you. I don't know. I just got to know how fast, so I got to get out of town.
Right there?
Yeah.
All right, so what this exhibit shows, this doesn't show everything that's going to be needed one day, it's just kind of what we call a backbone of the system. So this blue line would be water eventually coming from Pittsburgh over to Sauer City. Currently, Sauer City uses a million gallons a day of water from the city of Sanford already. It's coming through the county system to Sauer City. This would just be a supplemental route because more water is going to be needed as the town grows in the future. The reddish-orange colored line is, was contemplated to send wastewater, once this plant, the new plant expansion reseats capacity, got to go somewhere else. It's contemplated sending that wastewater down to the wastewater treatment plant in Sanford.
Well, with all due respect, views, we go to Wolf Speed there where the two blue lines are going, we're getting some more from Randolph County, throwing right to Wolf Speed. It doesn't, and I just don't see where it's leaving from Wolf, Wolf Speed is my only question.
That's what's not contemplated here. This is, this is interconnection with the city of Sanford, not what's needed inside the town of Sauer City.
That, show them the Rocky River line.
Right here?
Yeah. That's contemplated to be a sewer line, that's a gravity sewer line that will take waste from Sauer City to the city of Sanford wastewater treatment plant. I think that's the line you're talking about. It doesn't show it going exactly to Wolf Speed, whether it's from Wolf Speed or something else in Sauer City, we don't have it down to that level yet. But it's contemplated that, as it is right now, when your wastewater plant is, excuse me, Sauer City wastewater plant is expanded to six million gallons a day, it will handle this wastewater projected to come from Wolf Speed. So it doesn't need to go anywhere. It can go right to the wastewater plant in Sauer City. In the future, does Wolf Speed expand, does Sauer City expand, are there more companies? Are there commercial developments in those? We think the answer to that is yes. To deal with that, that's when that line along the Rocky River is needed so that you can get wastewater from Sauer City to the town of Sanford, the city of Sanford, is what we're thinking about. That's the line that's taking water away from.
Okay, and but again, I don't want to berate this, but there's a big blue line going into Wolf Speed that's going to use 5 million gallons of water a day, but we don't see anything coming out of Wolf Speed.
Because the water coming out of Wolf Speed and the ability to treat it is already in the process.
It's already there. Those lines that are there now, out in front of my house, are going to handle 5 million gallons of water.
I'm not exactly sure what's in front of your house, but Wolf Speed's responsible for getting some of the wastewater from Wolf Speed to the expanded wastewater treatment plant in Sauer City.
Thank you.
All right. Martin Mason.
Yes? I actually got two questions. Trying not to be so hard. First question is, I want everybody to be a little... Oh, sorry. My name is Martin Mason. I live at 41A Crap Road in Sauer City. This is in ETJ in Sauer City. I'm just curious about allocation. When you do what you're doing and everybody comes home, everybody's honeymoon is over, how do you propose to do allocations? Like if Sauer City wants to grow, do allocation get cut back because Durham wants more, or Angie wants more, or Hottlespring wants more? How do you deal with that? You get what I'm saying? As a captain?
What's your second question?
Second question, I live in ETJ. We don't get enough, we pay for a lot, who don't get enough? So I'm trying to figure out who's going to serve because this guy is going to have to, who's going to serve, I live in the west east part, and I don't know which township you're talking about that they passed. I guess I need to brush up on my county stuff to who's going to provide water and sewer to those areas. I live in Aller, and I'm trying to figure out if they're going to do a county that. Do we get water and sewer from Sauer City, or are we going to get county water from Sanford through the county? That's the second question.
Allocations are degrading, are treated with communication between the entities. So we try river water and town side to town side of Sauer City. We have to get funding, right? Because without some significant input for funding, there's not much room for Sauer City to grow because the only place to go to get money to install the infrastructure that's needed is the rate, rate basis you have, which is pretty small. So there's significant costs, ability to get revenue, this kind of small. But it's contemplated that annually we will have these conversations so that we're aware of what's happening. And what happens is it's a timing issue because you're always expanding your wastewater plant, your water plant, it's getting to where we're moving on and center. So you have to be able to time those things so that there's capacity available when the need is there. So we need to look at funding. We need to figure out how this is going to work. I think a lot of that's going to be state-supported funding, which will help create the timetable for us. And then, then the allocation becomes really relevant in the timeline of growth, expansion of wastewater plant, wastewater plant. So the moral of the story is we're obligated to talk to these folks every year to see where they are and to have a reasonable amount of allocation when needed so that growth can come along. That's what's contemplated in the year. The ETJ and the expansion of the water and the wastewater, that's a first come, first served kind of basis. I mean, there has to be some driver, much like it is now. I'm not sure if Sauer City running water in place that it's not development driven, right? I mean, the developers install it, the developers install it, and then it's made in town. That would stay the same. The only thing that we have is the possibility of what we call petition assessment, and we have the authority to charge the people that get that service for that service. For example, let's say it costs $100,000 to run a water line in front of 10 homes, then every home, your mom is paying $10,000 for the time. So that is a service that we provide, that we would provide inside of Sauer City.
And one of the things that I think that we need to understand is this merger is a marriage, so to speak. And I think we'll be talking to each other more than just once a year. We'll be talking the course of the year, going through what we see as we are trying to grow, as things are coming our way, and having that conversation with the city of Sanford and the other players in the dry water, with the dry river water, Gomri, Falack, Mediter. Things that has happened, and everybody pretty much in this room knows how we got here. And that's, you know, that's neither here nor there, that's not anything that we can do about. But the thing that we are hanging our hat on is how do we move forward? If we do nothing, we die on the vine. It's just that something.
I understand it's got to be something, that's not where I'm at.
I know where you're at.
I'm pro-growth, stop it.
Yeah.
My thing is future, we're talking about future.
Well, that is a conversation that whoever sits on this board will have to form that relationship with Sanford to ensure that we are able to grow, that we continue to grow, that we continue to move forward. Without that relationship being formed, then nothing happens. That's why I said it's almost like a marriage.
Do that speed up, I'm sorry. Do that speed up the process of getting water and sewer quicker? You know, I think it's two, three years out or something. The room, and Rommelville said, you know, the town was like two or three years out of upgrading the sewer plant, have sewer and water in, you know, to expand.
Well, let's face it, some construction.
That's what I'm actually going to do, this deal with Sanford. Move that up.
But not when everything comes together at about the same time because they, those charged with those pipes, they got to be running. We have SOC that we're hoping to get out from under, and then we have the construction of the plant itself with the 75 million. So we're hoping that all that kind of runs at the same cycle because we have folks who want to invest in development and is now, without water and sewer, not prepared. Someone's probably sitting in this room. And they're very patiently waiting for that water and sewer.
That's why I said question.
So, but getting back to what the mayor said, as far as the relationship and the relationship building goes, Vic and his team have been long before they've talked with us, way more than once a year. I mean, their staff's talking to our staff, I would say, hey. So it's just one of those things where it's, everybody's willing, there, sleeps to do the hard work. So I think to hopefully assuage those concerns, it's not going to just be a once a year, hey, how you doing conversation, and they can all know.
With our projected growth, are we going to have any issues even with the merger to get the scarce resources that we need for water and sewer? Because we're going to have other competitors competing in other cities. Is it, I'm sure there's some kind of total limit to the system. Are we going to have with the merger enough to grow for Sauer City with housing? I don't know, like distance of a can site, other industries and stuff. My concern is we're competing for those, those resources, little towns, and I just don't, I don't know how you can do that fairly. That makes sense.
I think that's interesting. The issue is funding, okay, and time. It takes a long period of time to build a wastewater plant, you all know that, you've been through the process. Takes a long period of time to put in sewer lines, you've been through that, you know, and it costs a lot of money. I don't know exact, I don't remember the cost of everything that we had on that page there, but it's in the hundreds of millions in dollars. That's not something that the town of Sauer City can reasonably assume without... That's not something that the town of Silver City can reasonably assume without some significant help from state agencies. That's the real issue you've got, okay? The timing and the balance of allocations and whatnot, we, we've got plans where there's in excess of forty-two million gallons a day of water moving around, and we have to be pulling out the sewer, okay? So, to feel like we've got a reasonable plan to balance all that, and that's based on some of the water supply plans and growth models that you all, y'all had, uh, Pittsburgh had, we had, Chatham County had. So we've taken all the information that we reasonably think we have, and, and put it together to create a plan that we think we can address all those major, high-level water balance kind of issue. Now, timing, that's a separate issue, and that, that really comes to balance, I think, some of those slates that I, to get it done, that's a whole thing.
We're just in such a pinch with our housing inventory, uh, two years out, we're just gonna have more appreciation of homes, and it's just, it's, it's pensioning tax, there are more, that we have such an issue with that supply.
We understand. Uh, and with the potential modifications of the S O C, we're trying to get some relief to that. We don't wanna talk too much about that, other than we're trying to modify it. So release the flow that, that could satisfy your agreement to Wolf Speed, because you've got, you know, building to Wolf Speed that, you know, somebody jeopardy right to submit, in terms of you all getting your obligation. And potentially getting more flow quicker than waiting for completion of the six million gallon a day. Again, here's this thing, we've got flow over time, trying to balance with when it actually comes to you. If, if we can pull these off, we think we might have some flow to allow for some housing developments. And, uh, maybe some commercial can still meet your responsibilities to Wolf Speed. And then the bigger plant comes out, you have a little bit more tech flow to deal with. But the reality of it is, even after that, you need more. The, the, the demand is here. There's no doubt about it. What I mean, with Wolf Speed and the potential for more things, as to campsite, you, you're not gonna be asleep, you little town.
Being very, very normal.
It's gonna be very dynamic. It, it's gonna create a lot of needs, uh, it's gonna require a lot of effort, on both the parts, to try to get funding that's necessary to do it. Because again, it, it, it takes a lot of time. That's just, I don't care who you, you do it on your own, or you do it with us, or whatever. That's just a fact. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thanks for that presentation. Uh, I hope that, uh, we have a better understanding, yes, sir?
I would just like to say, I was, to be clear with what Mr. Hayden said. At this point, we don't see any deal stopping. A lot of the things that we're asking for is really just to establish expectations. He mentioned the system development fee. Pittsburgh, Chatham County, and Silver City all have done the work to establish a system development fee that's higher than you could apply, higher than what we're suggesting they be. We're suggesting, uh, that they all be equal. That, that's the thing that we'd like to have, because it goes to rate parity, right? I mean, that's, it's easier for us to administer. It's less confusing, so that, that's why. Uh, we're also looking at, through Mr. Archer's firm, as you want the rates, right? It's because the same thing happens there. Is there a rate adjustment that we'd like to see, um, prior to the merger? If we vote, if y'all vote to merge in October, it's really a two-step process, right? You vote in October to merge the systems, and, and that means, okay, we, we're going ahead, there's no off-ramp, this is gonna happen. But what we call consolidation, consolidation wouldn't happen until July 1st of twenty-five. Because once you vote to merge, there's a lot of work that needs to be done for billing and employees and transfer things. It takes a lot of time. So it's a two-step process, and we would be consolidated July 1st of twenty-five.
Thank you. All right. And?
Real quick, uh, mayor, I just got a couple of things. One, there's a major project that they, uh, have been, Chris, they said bring it totally installed to two thousand seven hundred fifty-eight. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes.
That's major install. And one other thing about, um, uh, plan review. You know, there's been, projects been approved, uh, several large projects were approved on the board, and staff has started their process to do plan review for those, and I wanted to get more up there on that. We've got, um, agreements between staff and then the, and the project owner and developers. So we can move forward with some of those developments, starting the development review process. But it's not leaving it. There's a, things there we're waiting for. Anyways, it's positive. Right, that's all I got.
All right. Uh, town attorney? Got any comments?
I got one, mayor.
Yes, sir.
I got a, uh, text message from a neighbor, uh, compliment to the public works. I just wanted to brag on public works a little bit. My trash cart was emptied on Monday, and when I went to retrieve the car, I noticed the lid was missing. The lid had been loose for a while anyway. I called Public Works and had to leave a message to report the problem, but never received a return call. But, we received a new trash can the next day. The town of Silver City Public Works Department has never disappointed us. Dashia Hayes.
All right.
I always do it here.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Why do you think that's stellar in Mayor Rock Clark? She, she still is, um, helping with that, and Brianna is amazing at, um, passing it through.
All right. What else? People showing you journal.
I'm gonna get you these today.